August 23rd, 2022, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. Couple of items to go over before we officially get started. This meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel 27 and on the Pacific Coast TV's website. We have many community members in the audience this evening, and everyone in attendance will have the opportunity to speak. A review for the attendees. The Planning Commission Chair will open and allow the general public comments prior to specific item comments. The Chair will open up that comment, or those public, the other public comments during those specific items that are on the agenda. During the time that you would like to speak, I will recognize the raising hand icon and assist the public with those comments for each person to speak. You will all be given three minutes of time to each commenter, and a timer will show up on the screen. If you've dialed in this evening on the telephone only, you can push star six to mute and unmute your hand, and star nine to raise and unraise your hand. Otherwise, computers, tablets, iPhones have the icon hand feature, and you may press that when you're ready to speak. Public comment, there was only one public comment that I received through a planning commissioner, which I assume a couple of them have, a couple of you have responded to me. So I think that maybe all five commissioners received the public comment regarding the Caltrans. And I'm sure we will discuss their talk at that during presentation. And that's all I had for public comments this evening. Thank you for your continued patience to our public for this remote meeting. And now I would like to hand over this meeting to Chair Warren to officially begin.
Thank you, Bridget. So, welcome to Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 23rd. We're going to start with Pledge Allegiance, if you could join me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Bridget, if we could get a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Gossett. Commissioner Ruddock.
I'm here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
I am here.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
And Chair Gorn.
Here, I'm here.
We do have a quorum this evening of five commissioners.
So, first up on our agenda is approval of minutes for August 9th meeting. Does anyone have a comment or a question? Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, thank you for the minutes. I did just note that when we were discussing the traffic impacts of the Hyatt project, the minutes correctly reflect that we talked about CEQA's requirements for vehicle miles traveled. I also mentioned the level of service issues in conjunction with conformance with the local coastal program. And so, the minutes picked up the VMT issue for CEQA, but did not pick up the local coastal act circulation, you know, adequate for the farmer from Fresno to be able to visit. Obviously, it's a topic for discussion that cuts multiple ways, but I just wanted to be sure it was reflected in the notes, otherwise not.
I have the same recollection of events, and not seeing any other people raising their hands, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Commissioner Benjamin.
And we have a second from Commissioner Benjamin?
You do.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruddock?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Hi.
And Chair Gorn?
Yes, please.
Motion approved by zero.
So, we're going to open up this meeting to public comment. This is for public comment that is not on the agenda tonight. So if you have an issue that doesn't show up on our agenda and you want it addressed, it's time to raise your hand, and Bridget will put you through.
I also wanted to just make an announcement. This is new to us, so this is like our second meeting with Spanish translation. So, without the introduction, but going forward, we do have Victor and Anna behind the scenes doing Spanish translation currently. So, if someone's tuning in afar, they can, they can get online on there and change it to Spanish to listen to. So I just wanted to let you know that that's available.
Good, yeah, I was going to mention that in your opening. Thank you. I don't see anyone. Do you see someone in there?
I see one for general comment. Let me see, Janet Clark.
Hi Janet Clark.
Hello, my name is Janet Clark, and I would like to voice some concerns about the proposed Hyatt project. I'm not a Half Moon Bay resident, but I have lived on the coast side for about 25 years, and I really treasure the rural character and natural beauty of our coastal communities. Excuse me, I currently live in Pesca Dero, but I come up to Half Moon Bay all the time for community events, shopping, to meet up with friends, things like that. And I have three main concerns about the project. The corner of Highway One and Main Street is like a welcome sign for Half Moon Bay. Along with the historic Johnson House, it's the first thing that I and all of the other visitors coming from the South Sea as they're approaching town. And right now, that view is one of mountains, trees, residential buildings. It feels very welcoming. And to put a large hotel and associated parking lot on that corner seems like an affront to the character of the town. My second concern is that money, lots of money was just spent to upgrade that intersection with the traffic light and signage and things like that. And again, putting a large structure right there is going to make traffic, for me personally, a nightmare, and is going to detract from all of the work that was just done. And then my third concern is that we're experiencing, as I think everyone knows, a profound housing crisis here on the coast side. And having a hotel put there, you know, seems like it wouldn't be a very good choice of use. If you're going to develop that piece of land and allow a large structure there, then it should be something that takes the community's needs and interests into consideration. So, thank you for listening to my concerns. I appreciate your taking the time.
Well, thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight? And I am seeing none. Great.
Two, two more. All right, next, Rick Southern. Go ahead, Rick. You can unmute. There you go.
Yep, good. Thank you very much, and thank you, Commission members. This is a reflection on the study session from August 9th. Reading between the lines, there were two groups, one supportive and one negative to the project. The supportive group appeared to be an organized collective of friends of Greg Jamison, which is fine. And they had three main points, that the city needs an upscale hotel, that this would be a proud edifice to serve as the gateway to Half Moon Bay, commented very nicely by our last speaker, and that Mr. Jamison has worked patiently and diligently for the past six years to get the project approved. Many of the speakers characterize the opposition as your typical Half Moon Bay anti-development crowd that's a stereotype and dismissive tactic used to discredit an opposing position. And I just want to say that as an opposer, and one of three people that I know that oppose the Hyatt project, all of us currently object to the Dunes project. None of us objected to the Ritz or to Cameron's Hotel project. So, we're not anti-development. We are anti-bad development when it doesn't seem favorable to the community. Responding to some of their points, one, that we need a new upscale hotel. We're, we were at a 51% occupancy rate last year, and we have a lot of additional ADU and Airbnb units. So, we clearly don't have a capacity problem in Half Moon Bay. As for Mr. Jamison's struggles in getting his project approved, the time and effort and the investment that he put in, I feel bad about that, but it doesn't provide a pass when a project is not right for the location. The opposition speakers were mainly an unchoreographed, unrehearsed, unorganized group of people that represented a cross-section of the coast. And I think their concerns regarding the environment, the visual impact, the traffic, et cetera, you've heard repeatedly and are very good concerns. My personal overriding objection to the project is its enormity. If you visualize a football field, and then another half of a football field, and you line them up end to end, the Hyatt building would occupy that entire space from one end of the football field to the other end of the half-football field. That, to me, is more like something that belongs on Airport Boulevard near the San Francisco Airport, not something that belongs in Half Moon Bay. So, in closing, I would just say that due to the poor fit of the project, the numerous areas in which it conflicts with city code and policies to promote environmentally harmonious development, and the scary idea that this would be the gateway image from the south of our quaint coastal town, I think the EIR cannot be certified, and the project should be rejected by the Planning Commission. Thanks for my time.
Well, thank you. I would just assure you and anyone else who's listening that we take all those comments seriously, both individual planning commissioners and staff. We have listened to all of them very carefully and take them all seriously, so, including this one. So, thank you. We have another.
Yes, we do, one more. HMBhyatt@gmail.com.
Great, thank you.
Hi folks, Dave Shore here. That's actually no HMBhyatt@gmail.com, if you can hear me correctly. I assume you can. Rick Hernandez, lovely background of the Johnston House, thanks for that. I think everything that Rick Southern just said was spot on, and I think he summarized things well, having sat through the long hearing a few weeks ago. I really want to kind of frame what you've heard from many people who have objections to the hotel in a very simple, straightforward fashion. No matter what angle we're coming at this from, I think the goal of everybody who has whatever level of objection to the size, massing, location, and impact of the hotel, all of that is geared towards a very simple goal of trying to preserve the small-town charm and character of Half Moon Bay. And in fact, that simple statement is intrinsic. It's embedded deeply in your local coastal land use plan and your policies that implement the local coastal land use plan. People come here to look at the beauty, to experience the feel of this town. And it's really hard to understand how anybody could view a very large hotel project like this at the southern gateway as enhancing that, those characteristics, and not detracting from them. So, it really, there are going to be many technical arguments in response to the EIR coming towards you, I believe. But it really boils down to that feeling of what do we want our town to look like, while still allowing the project applicant to develop his parcel in a way that does not conflict with zoning regulations and planning policies. We're not saying leave it and leave it as a pumpkin field, although I think that would be lovely. But in summary, to reiterate what, I took some notes, what Rick Southern said, given having started to dig into the EIR in some detail, it really seems that based on objections raised in there, both for the project at 129 rooms and the somewhat smaller alternative at 102 rooms, I really don't see how the EIR can be certified, and the project at its current scope could be approved. There are many findings of quote "less than significant" close quote impact, many of which appear to be arbitrary, and I'll be able to document them in writing. But here's a big concern. A lot of less-than-significant impacts are cumulatively significant. And that's one of the quirks of working within the CEQA framework. But ultimately, we've got to come back to the reality of what happens in our town and what happens to the environment as a result of greenhouse gas emissions, traffic impacts, and all those other things. So, thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to speaking with you guys again. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shore.
That's all I have.
If there is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item, an item that's not on the agenda, now is the time to raise your hand. Do we have anyone else? In which case, I am going to close public comment for now. We'll have public comment later for agenda items. And I would like to open up our first item, which is our sign permit for this mural on Main Street. Who do we, who do we have presenting? Is that you?
Yes, that would be me, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the introduction, and members of the Planning Commission. This is a sort of a unique proposal for the Planning Commission, sign permit for a new mural downtown that's partially funded by the city. And I'll give a brief PowerPoint presentation to fill everybody in. Okay. All right, so the site of the proposed mural is on the northwest corner of Main Street and Kelly at the Cunha Country Store, the south elevation, that's sort of a blank wall there that contains a few windows. And the mural, since this was partially funded by the city, a mural advisory committee was assembled to assist with the selection of both the artist and the art. And the committee included representatives from the local art history and culturally focused organizations, and that assisted the city with selecting the artist and then going through a few rounds of the design. And then, per the sign code, murals do require the issuance of a sign permit by the Planning Commission. So, a sign permit application was submitted, and the mural design was then presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee, as well as our city council. Both were supportive of the ultimate decision on the mural design. This slide shows where the mural would be installed. And the intent of the mural is to celebrate the, or commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Pumpkin Festival. So, the mural itself has a sort of a Pumpkin Festival and agrarian theme to it. And this slide shows the new mural where it will be placed. Now, as you can see, it's, you know, it's essentially a zero-lotline building that exists there. And the sidewalk and quite possibly a portion of the roadway would be needed in order to, for the mural to be installed. And so, an encroachment permit would be required for, in the condition of approval, requiring that's been added. Now, the task, what the Planning Commission's task with this evening on this item is to, you know, review the proposal in relation to the sign code and the issuance of a sign permit. And it's pretty narrow. It's, you know, this, there's a section in the sign code that limits the size mural to, you know, the existing facade of buildings. And then also, a small acknowledgement is allowed to acknowledge the artist or, you know, background, et cetera, on the, you know, the mural art itself. And that's limited to four square feet. And so, that'll, there is some information about the, you know, the Pumpkin Festival, sort of commemorating the Pumpkin Festival, but the actual acknowledgement for the artist has yet to be included on the photo rendering that you see here. And that's about it. We do have the city manager logged in this evening that's been involved with this process every step of the way. I suggest that the Planning Commission, you're welcome to ask any questions of staff. We do, we also have the artists logged in this evening, and then suggest conducting a public hearing and planning commission deliberation. We are supportive of the sign, sign permit application. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would note that Matthew Chittister, the city manager, is here basically as the applicant, and you might want to give him an opportunity to say a word other than even introducing himself as the new city manager and doing that. So, don't know if you want to do that, Matthew.
Congratulations, Matthew.
Thank you. I really appreciate everybody's support, and it's exciting to be here with you tonight in this role, and especially on such a great feel-good item. I love the feel-good stuff. And I apologize, I'm in a public space, so there's going to be some background noise. But yes, this has been a great project. We had a staff member start leading the way, Victor Guyton. He unfortunately has left the city for the city of Edward City, so I'm going to carry this across the finish line. But, you know, the process has been great. There's been lots of feedback and input. The artist has been fantastic. She's local and understands the needs of the community, and has been great to work with, and is here to answer questions if you have any. Just as a reminder, the intent of this mural is to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Pumpkin Festival. It's not to accomplish everything that we want to accomplish, but we certainly plan to do more of these, and we're really excited to kind of go through this process and hope to bring more of these to you in the future. But I'm happy to take any questions on the process.
Great, we, I see that clarifying questions were snuck in here. So, does anybody have any questions about this mural? I don't see anyone, so we're going to quick open it up to public comment. If anyone in the public has a comment on this Main Street mural? Looks like we have.
Yes, we do have one, one so far. Mike Ferrera.
Good evening, Commissioners. I didn't come here with the intention to speak on this. I just, in looking at the painting, and looking at the gloves on the hands of the pretty young lady, I guess the indication is that she's a farm worker. And I was just wondering if really the depiction of farm work is quite so nearly glamorous is okay with the farm worker community. Generally, what I hear is that it's pretty hard work, at somewhat menial pay, and we have a very engaged farm worker community. And so, I'm just curious what their reaction to that depiction is. Or if maybe there's perhaps a future question to some of them as to whether that's the depiction they'd be comfortable with. And that's all. Just, it's a pretty picture. I'm just not quite sure that community would be comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have someone else who wants to speak, is that right?
Is that me? Yes, that's correct. Although it says it should be Hyatt.
Yes, Dave Shore.
Dave, so go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I'm still here. Hi, you know, I hadn't seen this before. Maybe it was in other meetings as a prelim, but it's kind of a combination of WPA art plus Diego Rivera. And I, I think it's great. It's really splashy. It's a, you know, I think, I think it'd be lovely, especially if you've got performers slated for being on the stage at Mac Dutra Park, then having that in the background, it actually turns it into kind of more of an event space, performance space. Yeah, looks good. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment on the artwork? I am seeing none. I'm going to close public comment. And I am going to open this up to Commissioners. And we have Mr. Benjamin. Commissioner Benjamin, the mic is yours.
Thank you. So, a couple of questions for staff. So, first, my aesthetic reaction is it is indeed a beautiful mural. And I would enjoy looking at it every day. I, I heard the concern that former Mayor Ferrera mentioned in passing. And it's a question of content. I'm not sure it's our purview under the side ordinance to offer criticism of comment, but I think it's a legitimate question that, you know, the public should think about, that the city can think about. And if they have, and this is their conclusion, I'm going to respect that, but I do appreciate what the former mayor had to say. I did have one other question that's more a process question. So, this is probably directed at the city manager. Welcome and congratulations, Matthew. On the other side of the street from this mural, we had some mosaic work in tile form in some of the concrete areas that was taken out. And it was a bit of a controversy at the time. And one of the elements of that was that the artists may have felt that they were not privy to the process through which art evolves or potentially is replaced. And so, without meaning to detract in any way from what I truly think is a beautiful mural and a great sentiment, what is the process by which this piece of art evolves? Or are we making any statement about that?
Yes, I think that's a good question, and I appreciate it. You know, as you know, this is a piece of private property, so the city does not have control over it. But we have a great property owner. The family that owns and operates Cunha's Country Store owns the property. They've been on board with this project since we proposed it to them, very supportive. I've actually, I met with them today and are very excited about it, and that was one of their questions. And the agreement we're working on with them will allow us to maintain this mural there for at least 10 years. And at 10 years, we'll have to meet with the owner again and talk about negotiating a longer term, depending on the condition of the artwork and how the community feels about it at that time. The artist, of course, is going to do this in such a quality that we hope it'll last much longer than 10 years and will be done in a way that will hopefully make cleanup from any vandalism or graffiti or other damage easy. And having a local artist helps with that, because we'll enter a contract, make sure there's a mechanism to bring her in to do work on it. But ultimately, at the end of 10 years, if the property's been sold or if the current owner has decided they or if the current owner has decided they don't want it there, unfortunately, that means they would have the right to remove it. The city at any point could also remove it through our public art deaccessioning process. That's the process we've gone through on a couple of art pieces recently. The Half Moon statue that was at the gateway at Main and Highway One and a statue that was deteriorating at Kitty Fernandez Park. And that's a very public process that goes through both the Recreation Commission and the City Council and makes sure there's public engagement and engagement with the artist before any public art is removed. So hopefully that answers the question.
No, that was, that was a really hopeful answer. And I'm glad that we, you know, we're a planning commission, so it's good for us to be aware of what the plan is. So I'm grateful for the insights. I have no further questions or comments. I will be borrowing some insight from the city attorney about the content aspect of the mural that was raised by the public. I have no further, further questions.
And I'm happy to answer that question. It's, it's a question that's come up. And if, if the city attorney is okay with it and if the commission desires through the chair, I'd be happy to answer the question from the audience.
Sure, Ken. That's fine.
Yeah.
It's not really, it's not really our purview.
Exactly. So it's not part of the consideration, but go for it.
Yeah, I think it's important for the community to understand the process and how we arrived here. And, and, you know, the artist is here and she can speak to this if we think we need one more thorough answer. I think her, what she described, and if you caught the city council meeting last week where she presented this artwork, I don't believe this was intended specifically to be a farm worker in the sense of the laborers we have in the field. The intent of the people in this mural was to represent our community, the people that are here. She said that she very intentionally didn't show any faces and kept skin tones and hair tones pretty muted so that hopefully anybody can see themselves as these people in this mural. They can put themselves in that mural. It obviously has a rustic feel to it, a historic feel to it. And so I don't believe the intent was to depict our modern farm workers or the, you know, the farm workers of the last several years. It's, it's simply somebody picking vegetables in an ag environment. Certainly, I, we've heard this concern from that community and we've, we've had conversations with them. And I think the best answer is, you know, we want to have a mural that is focused on that group, that part of our community, that part of our culture that really does represent them. This is much more broad, much more general and much more focused on the pumpkin festival.
Thank you, Matthew. Vice Chair Hernandez, with the positive side of this story.
So did not intentionally put an icon in the mural in my background, which is, you know, the Johnson House is in the mural. I think the Johnson House isn't just about, the mural isn't just about the agricultural view. It is about our community and the pumpkin festival. You've got Miramar in there. And I just think it's spectacular piece of art that does a really good job capturing the essential elements of our community, the technology, the history, the people who have built our town. So I applaud it. I'm a very big fan of what we're doing here and the process I'm aware of that we've gone through to get here. Two things, the, the first one is nature doesn't naturally clash with itself. It doesn't happen. The pink stucco on that building is not a color that occurs in nature. And so as the artist is thinking through how they implement this project, I encourage them to think about the transition between what are the white spaces or neutral spaces between the pink stucco and the lovely design they've come up with. And it's going to be a challenge. And so just something I encourage them to think about. The second thing is, you know, Matt, congratulations on your role as city manager. I know you've also shepherded this project through the Parks and Rec Committee. I've had the benefit of listening to those meetings in my living room and my spouse has participated in those conversations. So I really applaud the process you've gone through to get this project here and to get yourself in the role that you're in too. So congratulations.
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Vice Chair Hernandez. Any other commissioners would like to address this topic? Seeing none, wait, seeing one. Yes, Commissioner Riddick.
Yeah, help me out. Are we still doing clarifying questions?
No, we're not.
Okay. Well, if I may, I just say, it seems to me that this is fine with the sign ordinance. I'm happy to support it. I think it's a great example of, of efforts to make our Main Street and downtown even more vibrant. And I'm grateful to the, the artists and city staff and the volunteers who helped shepherd this process along. I think it's a really good step. I, I showed the mock-up of the mural to several friends in the last few days. And I learned an interesting thing from one of them who told me that in Washington State, there is a town called Tappanish that is in the eastern part of the state near Yakima, where they, they are, their claim to fame is, is murals. They are the city of murals. Started with, with one guy who created a mural. He was the uncle of my partner, Susan Kirby, as it turns out. And now they have 79 through the downtown area to the, to the point where it's a big tourist attraction. So I think there's more, more power and more good in public art like this than maybe I was realizing. So again, good project. I'm going to be happy to support it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Gossett, the floor is yours.
Thank you and welcome, Matthew. I'm glad you are with us tonight. And as Commissioner Hernandez had said, I was able to also follow the process a little. Thank you, Scott, for providing an excellent report so we, I could go back to some of the meetings. And I'm thankful that the mural committee and the rec committee were able to pick this piece of art because all the art submitted, I thought was just beautiful. And so I'm also very supportive of this project. And the one question I have, and it probably, it's not really a question, it's a comment. As, you know, Commissioner Riddick spoke about the town that had many murals. I was in Redwood City a few weeks ago and they had murals on their utility boxes. And I just thought, wow, it was just, it made walking around the port square just very enjoyable. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to extend this program, but especially since we have some really cool art that it seems that the town commissioned. So thank you so much. I'm supportive of this project.
And Commissioner Benjamin, your hand is up.
I'm mute. I'm muted.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm unmuted now. That was because I was moving the resolution next in order.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Can we, can you bring the, the artist on?
Yes, I can bring her, yeah.
Because, you know, I don't really have a question. But everyone loves this mural. And so just thought I would bring her on. Is she there?
I just moved her over, so she just came over. It's just one.
That's Julie Engelman?
Yes.
Hi, Julie Engelman. I don't know if you can hear me. Can she hear me?
There she is. There she is.
We don't really have a question for you, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm personally so impressed. I know that we're just supposed to, as a planning commission, approve the, the sign ordinance, say that it meets the sign ordinance. And it does, but this is wonderful. This is like stunning, great. So, so thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And thank you guys all for putting on, organizing events or projects like this just to preserve the community culture of Half Moon Bay. I think Half Moon Bay is a really special place and it's super unique, especially it being located in the San Francisco Bay Area. So thank you guys for, you know, talking about this and encouraging more projects like this and encouraging me and just being really excited about this. And I do want to say one thing about the woman, farm worker. Poor woman in the, it could be a woman in her backyard too. I did want to keep it very ambiguous for these, these reasons. And I didn't want to, I wanted to keep it sensitive to any sort of, you know, culture or any sort of, you know, group within Half Moon Bay. So I really want to keep it closely aligned to the assignment of celebrating the pumpkin festival and to sort of celebrate the history and the culture of Half Moon Bay. So I took several visits to the Half Moon Bay Public Library as well as the History Association. And I interviewed Mary Reddy there. And she gave me some reference photos. And I literally took a photo from a woman in one of those books. And I took those clothes and I put them on this, this woman picking the artichokes in the field. So that's where the clothing, I guess it could be interpreted as like more glamorous, but back in the day, they did wear those kinds of clothing. So that's why she is depicted in that way. I just want to clarify that.
And thank you very much. I do believe we have a motion.
You sure do.
To approve. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Riddick. Roll call, Bridgette.
No, I'm on mute. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
A hearty aye from me.
And Chair Gordon?
Yes, please.
Motion approved.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to, actually, we have another mural. This is an application for a sign to allow installation of a mural also on Main Street. And Scott, I think this is yours. Scott Phillips is going to present our, on, on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Yes, another mural on the agenda tonight and very close by. This is at 508 Main Street. And a little bit different in that this is a, a private project. So not necessarily, you know, funded by the city. But a sign permit is nonetheless needed for new mural. So, and then, all right, so the, the site in particular is actually the smallest parcel within downtown that includes a commercial office building shown in green here. And then the red line indicates where the, the new mural would be installed. So it's a private building, you know, a private applicant. But the mural would face, you know, a city park, Mac Dutra Plaza. Now, a little bit different process with this one since, you know, it's a different applicant. And this was presented to our architectural advisory committee. And generally speaking, the advisory, the AAC, they were supportive of the, the new mural, but had a few little suggestions, you know, for, for one, they, it wasn't entirely worked out as far as the, there's a door within the mural space. There wasn't exactly, you know, were they going to paint over the mural, over the door or leave the door as is? Couple of unanswered questions that got resolved before agendizing this item. Now, here's where the mural would be installed. It's basically just to the left of the stage, the, you know, the wall there that faces Mac Dutra Plaza. And then this is the, the photo rendering, the final photo rendering that would show the, where the new mural would go. And similar to, to Cunha, the mural would be installed, you know, need to utilize the park temporarily for the installation. So you'll notice that there is a condition of approval for an encroachment permit. And that's for the, the mural installation. Now, to support the new mural, Public Works has offered to replace the hydrangeas that you currently see within the area, you know, the would block portion of the mural. The hydrangeas would be, would be replaced with native drought tolerant grasses, similar to what you see at the library. And Public Works has offered to do that. And that would reduce the blockage of the, the new mural by the plants that are currently out there. Now, similar to the last one, the planning commission this evening is tasked with, you know, reviewing the, the sign permit. And it's really more about, you know, is this an appropriate location for the mural as opposed to the actual design? And then also the four square foot acknowledgement, which right now is shown as the, sort of the white, little white box there. And, you know, giving the artist some, you know, just acknowledgement. Now, one other thing to note, you know, the Parks Master Plan that was adopted now a couple of years ago did have some mention of Mac Dutra and recommendations of additional artistic elements such as murals. And so this would certainly square up with that recommendation and implement, you know, to some extent. I mean, this is a, a private endeavor that faces Mac Dutra, but it would certainly implement that recommendation. And I'm sorry, I, I know we've been asked to have planning commission questions after the public hearing, but I'll be sure and change that order on the, the next presentation of the planning commission. So, but yeah, similar to the last one, you know, we are recommending approval of the sign permit. And, you know, after taking public comment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I could say just a quick, quick something?
I'm sorry, is that John Doughty?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just to say, I, I happened to be the one who, I got, was hired on and, and was the senior analyst responsible for helping get Mac Dutra rebuilt. And I'm thrilled to see this. When we were working on that, we were working with a different property owner. We were struggling even with to get approval and an agreement on a color. I don't think any of us were extremely thrilled with the, sort of the seafoam green or whatever you want to call that. And I'm, I'm just saying, you know, this is something that I think we've envisioned for some time to, to bring something to that wall. And, and I could just say that it wasn't because we didn't have an interest initially in doing so. It's just taken some time for ownership to shift. And I think the private parties to come together and work this out and deal with it. And so I just say is, this is something, I think, long time in coming. And I appreciate the willingness of the property owner to also collaborate with us. And just wanted to put that out there, that this was, I think, always envisioned and, and there. So thank you.
Thank you, John Doughty. Since we did open the idea of clarifying questions, does anybody have a question about this project? In which case I would like to open up to a public comment. If there's anyone in the public who would like to comment on this agenda item, raise your virtual hand. It looks like we do have, we did have.
Well, that was Commissioner Gossett, but I don't know if she wants to wait.
Maybe you can wait here. The discussion. I am not seeing anyone in the public who wants to comment on this mural. Is that right? So we will not open public or close public comment or not open it. And we can move on to just talking about the item. And Commissioner Gossett, do you have something you wanted to?
The only question I have is, you know, the removal of the hydrangea. I understand that that would be part of the process. My concern would be replacing the plants, you know, at a time when there's sufficient rain or that they're watered when they're installed, if, if they are installed and it hasn't started the rain yet. Some of the plants around the library. Some of the plants around the library, especially in the bioswales, have died due to lack of water. So it's something just to keep in mind if we are taking that action to replace those established hydrangea. But I am supportive of this design. It's just beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Doughty, I see your hand. We will get to you in a minute. But we're going to let the commissioners talk for a minute. Mr. Benjamin?
Yeah, I just, sort of ditto the concerns that Commissioner Gossett have. And I will just guess that when we recognize Director Doughty, he'll tell us that there are conditions to make sure those plants are established. And if they perish, that they have to be reestablished. And if not, that he would be amenable to adding a condition like that, I'm going to guess. Because it's a public space. I think it's a lovely mural. I think it's nice for future citizens to know what kelp look like. And I, you know, I always say that half jokingly. And I, I fully support the project. Scott, when you mentioned that the details of how the door was going to be painted, I just want to clarify that the picture that we see here is actually the way that that was resolved, that the door, that entry door will remain white, that the utility meter reading area on the left-hand side is painted as shown. Is that, is this the resolution of those questions?
Yes, that's correct. And I'll, I'll go ahead and screen share just to clarify that. Yes, as you can see, the, the utility box would be painted. But the door would remain as is, white with the, you know, the business, business sign on there. So.
Understood. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be sure I, not because I'm the arbiter of taste. My wife would tell you, she would laugh if someone said that. But it's because I, I wanted to be sure that we had an unambiguous description of what the project was, was going to be. And I think the ability to use these walls to create interesting effects that are relative to place. A good example, when you're in the Stanford Chopping Mall, sitting in a little French cafe looking, bistro looking place. If you look in the corner, there's a picture of a cat carrying a fish in his mouth, painted mural on the wall. And the name of the, the painted sign is the Rue du Chéquet Biche, the road of the cat that fishes. So a little dry humor playing into the, into the mural interplay. And it would have been nice if, if we could have found some kind of interplay like that. But the theme is beautiful. I only kibbitz because the chair kibbitz on an earlier item. But I understand that's not our role. So I'm going to support this project. Thank you.
And Vice Chair Hernandez, what do you think?
I would agree with Jimmy's wife that he's not the best arbiter of good taste. But that not what's in that is done in the most delicate way possible. But the one thing that I'm supportive of this project, but the one thing that strikes me is the, I've looked at the new MacDutra Plaza many times. I've enjoyed a donut from Half Moon Bakery there many times and participated in other public events. The addition of this mural and this presentation is the first time I've noticed that door. And so, I mean, I actually want to go look and see, does that door actually exist? Because I've never seen it before. And so the one thing I would encourage the artist and the owner to think about as they go through this is, is there a way to, to Jimmy's point, I'm going to go back to the arbiter of good taste, is there a way to incorporate the design and the door into the design in a way that's less jarring? Because I think there's an opportunity to do something clever there. I don't know what it is, not going to prescribe it. I just say I've never noticed that door until now because it really stands out in this implementation. So that's the only feedback I have. I support this project and I have no further comments or questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Reddick?
Yeah, just briefly, I think this is another excellent effort to enhance the vibrancy of downtown. I appreciate the reviews that have taken place on this. And I'll confine myself to saying I find that it conforms with the sign ordinances and I will vote for it.
And John Doughty, you had your hand up earlier, I think, to answer Commissioner, which Commissioner? You want to?
Only to say that, one, Jimmy's, Jimmy's right in the fact that it's on our property. We will maintain it. We will make sure that the plants are maintained, grow as we did from the beginning when, when these were planted initially. But we do have bubbler irrigation in there. So that's why those hydrangeas have done so well is because they were watered. And so unlike those areas in the street by the library that I'm, I'm as frustrated as anybody about trying to maintain those things. These will actually get regular watering through bubbler system. So should not be an issue with that.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comment, I'm looking for motion to approve. Do we have that? Commissioner Reddick?
I move, we approve the resolution next to hand.
Thank you.
Second emotion.
That's Commissioner Vice Chair Hernandez.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Hernandez?
Another heartfelt aye.
And Chair Goran?
Yes, please.
Approved, five zero.
So we're going to move on to another item. This is continued from a meeting in July. Planning Commission had a meeting, had a quorum, but did not have full commissioners. But three out of the five commissioners, Vice Chair Hernandez and myself, were not at that meeting. So it was continued to today, to tonight. And this has to do with the Caltrans emergency sign on Highway One South of town. John Doughty, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Chair. And I'll ultimately turn this over to Scott. This is Scott's night on the Planning Commission. So, and he's done a great job. But just to, just to, to carry over what, and carry on with what Chair Goran indicated. Yes, this was heard at July 12th. We had three of five commissioners. Ultimately, staff was directed to come back with potential findings of denial for this item. And that is where we sit today. Process wise, Winter and Scott and I met today. And just to clarify, and what our recommendation for you in terms of process tonight is to, to take the full presentation by Scott, which will include what those of you that were present on the 12th saw. Those of you, I know the other two that weren't present, did watch the video from that meeting. So you are certainly up to, up to speed as well. But we are suggesting that you basically reopen the public hearing. You reopen public comment. And you, you basically consider what occurred at the last meeting, but include any additional information that might be presented by staff, including findings for, for denial as well as what the community may say as well in addition to what they said on July 12th. So that's the process. I don't think it's unique. I don't think it's different than what you thought it was going to be. Just wanted to be clear and, and not be narrowly looking at it to say we're just stuck with what we did last meeting. But we can add to the public hearing and public comment process with that. Absent any questions specific on process to myself or Winter, I will turn it over to Scott to run through the presentation, if that's fine. Thanks, John. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is, this is not a mural. We've got a variable message sign, otherwise known as a VMS. So I'll run through a quick PowerPoint presentation. A lot of the information that the three of you that were at the, the previous meeting saw. But just to kind of refresh everyone's memory on what's involved with this project. Right, so this slide includes a photo rendering of the proposed VMS and the guardrail replacement as well as new cypress trees behind it. And that's essentially the, the big items that are included in this proposal. And now, one other thing, the eucalyptus trees that are sort of behind where this photo was taken would also be trimmed to allow for better visual of the, the VMS from the roadway when you're traveling north. Just a little background, the City Council received two updates on this proposal as it was going through the motions back in October and November of 2020. So this has been going on for several years now. The City Council requested that the VMS receive review by our Architectural Advisory Committee and that the original VMS location next to the, the car dealership was not appropriate, that the, the location as proposed now was, you know, functionally better. And ultimately, Caltrans did relocate the sign to the current location. Now, just so you're aware, this, this is a small piece of a larger project that includes similar improvements between Half Moon Bay and Daly City. Within city limits included with this permit is just one sign. Now, Caltrans, as the lead agency for SEQA, did prepare the initial study and draft mitigated negative declaration. And all, then submitted a, an application to the city for coastal development permit back in January of this year. Architectural Advisory Committee took a look at it in April and suggested minor changes to the proposal, including the addition of the cypress trees behind the sign location. And then, as John mentioned, back on, back in July of this year, Planning Commission reviewed the proposal, but then had some concerns about compliance with LCP policies and continued the item to a date certain of this evening. And let's see, I'll go through a little more here. And as far as noticing, since the item was continued to a date certain, noticing was not required. But for the previous meeting, we did post the site. We also sent out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet. And we also published a legal notice in the newspaper. Now here's the, the location of the, where the guardrail would be replaced and the new VMS would be installed. So basically, right across the highway from Kenyatta Cove and just north of the city limit, the southern city limit. The site itself is within a visual resource corridor, otherwise known as the Town Boulevard. And then here's a section of the new sign and guardrail. A new sign, five, would be five feet in height, or, excuse me, five feet by 12 feet in size. And then here's the elevation. And then landscape plan that was prepared after the Architectural Advisory Committee review that includes the three trees. Only one was suggested. They're, they're up for adding three. And now the key issues for the Planning Commission to consider, you know, the, for one, environmental sensitive, environmentally sensitive habitat and protected species. We do have a creek within the vicinity as well as a agricultural pond. Mitigation measures were included with the adopted initial study and mitigated negative declaration. They're applicable to this, the new site of the VMS. It would mitigate any potential impacts. Visual resource area. Now, the proposal was reviewed by Architectural Advisory Committee. And they did, you know, not only suggest the cypress trees, but a reduction in the VMS size. You know, as discussed in the previous meeting, it's unclear if the proposal would be in compliance with applicable coastal development or Coastal Act and Land Use Plan policies related to scenic and visual resources. And specifically Coastal Act 30251 as well as our land use policies 912 and 912. And as John mentioned, we have prepared findings for both denial and approval. And then the last land use plan policy for the Planning Commission to consider is Policy 2-24, which involves infrastructure capacity and design. And it's really a matter of question for the Planning Commission. Is the new sign necessary for infrastructure and capacity and design of the, the highway itself? So. You know, I mentioned this earlier, Caltrans is the lead agency for SEQA. And based off on the review of the complete record, staff's analysis concludes that the proposed project will not result in a significant impact due to avoidance measures and mitigation. If the Planning Commission decides to adopt the resolution for approval, SEQA is not applicable if the commission decides to adopt the resolution for denial. And so staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing. And we're happy to answer any questions. The design team from Caltrans is also logged in this evening. And let's see, we, our recommendation is that the Planning Commission evaluate the proposal and determine whether approval or denial of the application is appropriate. And staff is supportive of Planning Commission's authority to use discretion and determine the appropriate decision regarding the coastal development permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So I would, I know that I like to get to public comment and not keep anybody waiting. This one's a little complicated. I know that everybody has discussed the details of it quite a bit. But if anybody has clarifying questions, especially about the process and what happens next. Nobody? Okay. So we'll move on to public comment. If anyone in the public has anything that they would like to say about this sign on Highway One, now would be the time to raise your hand. And Bridget will let you in here.
Okay.
Is there anyone?
I have just one, two so far. I have Mike Ferrer followed by Lenny Roberts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for a chance to comment. And I have a question. I think I just heard that the sign is just outside the city limits. And if that is true?
It's right at the limit.
It's right at it, not outside of it?
It's within the city limits. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That clarifies that aspect. That done, my comment is that I side with the commissioners that would, are in favor of denial. It's hard to see the real necessity for this or why we want to remind visitors of what, of things that we see over on Bay Shore Highway. Electronic signs are. Electronic signs are not particularly aesthetic relative to our vision of what coastal towns should be. And I think it's actually a little bit jarring to have it. And once again, it's hard really to see the practicality of that sign and what it could actually say that could actually make a difference. And so with that, I would just like to commend the Commissioners that are inclined to deny. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lenny Roberts.
Yes, sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. I hope you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Well, thank you. Lenny Roberts, speaking for Green Foothills. We objected to the prior proposal for signs by Caltrans in Half Moon Bay and the midcoast. And I kind of want to echo what Mike Ferrera just said about the unique qualities of Half Moon Bay and the scenic and visual resources of the coast are what people come to the coast to see. They are not really coming to look at signage of, you know, of this nature or other kinds of sort of urban signage that we see so much on the bayside. And you certainly heard from people already tonight about the unique character of Half Moon Bay, and I don't need to, I heartily agree about the unique character of Half Moon Bay and the long and careful process that you've gone through for your local coastal plan update, all the thought that's gone into your design standards and so forth. So I would heartily endorse or support the tentative decision that the three Planning Commissioners were indicating at your meeting, your prior meeting. And this is not the only part, place where Caltrans is proposing to put these signs. So we'll probably be weighing in on a similar set of issues in the midcoast area. So we would really prefer to have minimal signage. People do have other ways of finding out about road conditions today. And I know it was observed that maybe in the south coast, you don't get such good cell coverage. But as you get closer to Half Moon Bay, you do get good cell coverage, and there are other options for people to divert if there's a traffic problem. And I think that was probably the main reason for these signs, although the sign that was shown tonight was a different kind of message. That's not a Caltrans message. So I would just support denial of this coastal permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny Roberts. Do we have anyone else in the public who wants to comment on the sign, proposed sign south of town?
I have no one.
I don't see anyone. So I will close public comment. And I guess we've had our clarifying questions, and now we can just talk about this project. Commissioner Reddick.
Thank you, Chair Goran. I want to thank staff for the thorough work in preparing the two draft resolutions in favor of approval and in favor of denial. I think that, for me, it does an excellent job of focusing what are the key issues here. At the July hearing, I spoke in favor of this application, and I will tonight again for two main reasons. One is that our policies that are at stake here, 92 and 912, they don't say that there will be no new development in this region. They do say that the siting and design of development must protect the visual character. And I think that it's impressive how the extent to which the applicant has worked on siting and design to make this as minimally intrusive as possible. As you know, the site itself is in a dip in Highway 1 and in a very wooded area. It's down in a low dip, and I'm pretty certain that there isn't another spot on Highway 1 within the city limits that would be less obtrusive for such a sign than this particular spot. And the applicant has also listened carefully to AAC input, reduced the size of the sign, built in a landscaping plan that involves cypress trees behind it to minimize the visual impact. And as the staff report points out, this sign would, to be off the vast majority of the time, that is not emitting light, would be off so that it would be generally unnoticeable along Highway 1, which I think is the kind of protection that we're looking for with policies 91 and 92 and 912. My second main reason for supporting this is public safety. I am so concerned about the impact of through traffic on Highway 1, on the quality of life in Half Moon Bay, that I am motivated to support efforts to improve the management of traffic, even if they will make a small difference only occasionally. But I think it's such an important quality of life issue for us that we should bend over backwards. And I don't think, I would disagree with the fact that everybody has a cellphone and doesn't need this. I guarantee that not every car driving up Highway 1 is going to have their cellphone attuned to GPS or something else to warn them of it. I can easily imagine a scenario where the Tom Lantos tunnels are out and signage like this would attempt to help people detour off of northbound Highway 1 and over 92. And this would be a service not only to those tourists, but also to Half Moon Bay residents. Because if you live in Half Moon Bay, north of Highway 92, and the signage is deterring a whole bunch of cars from getting stuck up there with the tunnels closed, I think that's a big deal. The draft resolution for denial, the main point it seems to me it makes is that this sign would be utilitarian and mechanical. And it's hard to dispute that, right? I mean, the thing would not be beautiful, but isn't it the case that every sign along Highway 1 and our city limits, not to mention traffic signals and other utilitarian things like that, are already exist and are mechanical and utilitarian? So I don't see that as a reason to squash this. Anyway, I know that reasonable people will disagree on this issue, but that's because of the siting and design work that's been done and the public safety issues. I do support this. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And Scott, if you could leave that up for a second. I just skipped myself in the clarifying questions. This is a five-foot by 12-foot sign. Is that what's in this picture? Because that doesn't look like, I know traffic signs are bigger than how they appear, right? But is that five-foot by 12-foot? What we just saw? What was, I don't know, why'd you move? The sign in the picture.
This slide here shows the dimensions of the new sign.
Yeah, I know, but so the one in the picture, you know, that looks, you know, closer to unobtrusive. But five-foot by 12-foot is, isn't that a little large? I mean, I know that's their smallest sign, but this is five by 12. You're right. That's what you're saying. What's in this picture? Is that right? These three lines? Are you there?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, five by 12.
It is intended to be depicting it, obviously, it's a photographic depiction. But I would point, if you look up above for scale, you look at the boom arm for the signals. Those are going over an entire lane, basically, plus the edge there. So if you look context with that deal, it's pretty much the scale, at least in width. The height, I'm a little, I'm with you that I'm not sure that the five-foot height, width of it is there. I mean, I think the width is close to 12, because if I look at it against the arm of the signal above there, you can see that's pretty much in scale to that.
Okay. I was just curious. Doesn't look like it to me. So, thank you. I'm going to open this back up to Commissioners. It looks like Commissioner Benjamin has his hand up.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to echo the praise that Commissioner Reddick gave to staff. I think that pitching this right down the middle and reporting what the results were, you know, from the last meeting and carefully developing findings for denial and creating an open forum for all of the Commissioners to weigh in at this meeting is fine with me. And that's a great process, and I applaud that. Thank you. I also appreciate Commissioner Ruddick's feelings, you know, his awareness, I think acute awareness of the visual resources and the need for good traffic information that is widely available. And in agreeing with him on all of those motivations, I conclude that this is not the right location or the right technology. So as he promised, reasonable people do disagree here. My thinking about this project is not that we don't want to provide good information to the public. I think that the ubiquity of information devices may be a surprise to those who feel like this might not be redundant in this location. But I will say, just as a thought experiment, let me grant that there are people who are not going to have Waze or are not going to get the cellphone message, or they're not going to have, you know, a router in their car, and ask, what is the best way, the most effective way, to get this information to a member of the traveling public who might value the information? And that gets to why you would provide it. One of them would be that you want to give them a chance to make an alternate route. And I agree that, as I think Commissioner Reddick really pitched it, the best case very well, that, you know, a problem in the Lantos tunnel, or maybe a problem on Highway 92, just to further the idea that could cause people to maybe continue north rather than go east, you know, would benefit from knowing that information. But the time to get that information is when you have the most alternatives available. And that happens before Tunedus Creek Road or before 84. And the 10 minutes between those locations and the locations that we see here, assuming that the traffic is free flow, and that the fact that you are backed up is not a cue to you that you might want to call 511 and see if something is wrong, suggests to me that there's a better location for this kind of technology. With respect to the aesthetic question, I agree that the design effort in the ARC made an effort to sort of diminish this. But 12 feet is 12 feet. I mean, that's big. And when you get closer to it, it's going to be big, and it's not going to be over your head passing by. It's going to be right there next to you, you know, a multiple of the width of your car. That's how big 12 feet is. And I think, you know, it's also a cue, as I think the public speakers mentioned tonight, that Half Moon Bay is about navigating somehow. I think a better cue to the way that we approach Half Moon Bay, our aesthetic, should, you know, the visual cue might be the kind of information that you see when you're in a national park or a great state park. What you might see as you're approaching it from some distance, 50 miles, let's say, is a sign that says, "Traffic conditions. Tune into AM radio station something or other." And the nice thing about that is that you get the information early. It doesn't require internet. It's just a local AM radio station that is widely available if they're traveling by car. Pretty sure they're going to have an AM radio, even if they don't have a cellphone. And it also has the advantage that it's not just in one location. You can get that, you know, if you drive by and you kind of, your attention is diverted and you miss the sign, you're not going to go back and say, "What was that?" You could actually turn on the radio, and for a distance of several miles, you're going to be able to get that message in as many languages as they want to give it to. And to me, this is an example of a technology that may be older, but I think it's a better technology, because it can be deployed in a more discreet way over a longer distance that is less obtrusive to the environment. And, you know, at the last meeting, and I don't mean to suggest any derision here, but I asked about the department. They've got money to build signs. Signs is what they do. And this would be a sign. It wouldn't be a VMS sign. It would be a sign that says, "Hey, there's a traffic conditions. You might want to look ahead." And that could be way down the road. It could also be a much smaller sign, because all it has to do is tell you, "Tune in on that radio station to get the message," like you do when you go into Yosemite, or you do when you go into Yellowstone. To me, there are better alternatives, and the infrastructure policy that talked about whether we're using the best technology, whether it's necessary, to me suggests that with a little more thought, maybe a different placement, different technology, we could produce a better result for the traveler, a more discreet result for the viewing public, and, you know, a highly reliable and highly available source of information. That's my take, and that's why I will be supporting the findings for denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Other Commissioners. So Vice Chair Hernandez.
So I work in technology. I feel like technology is ubiquitous part of my life, and I find myself at competing concerns. On the one hand, effective communication when we're driving along Highway 1 about legitimate emergencies. There's an important public benefit to that. And not everybody uses Waze or Google Maps or Apple Maps or has the advantage of driving a car with Tesla navigation in it that often tells you about these problems before you get to Miramani's Point Road. So I agree that there's a percentage of the population that would benefit from this tool. But I'm struck by my experience with Caltrans and them taking several years to do something as simple as reprogram the timing of lights on Poplar Street and Highway 1. And they seem to have a desire to roll out technology and not thinking through the consequences of how it impacts our community, how it benefits our community, and maybe there's a better way to do things. And so as I look at this, I think that this is a hammer looking for nails. Caltrans has an approach they're used to taking. They're trying to apply it here. And I really don't think this is the best place to apply this technology at this location to create a real public benefit. There are some people who would benefit from it, but I view that as corner cases. This isn't something that's going to really make a material difference to people's lives, given where it's at. If you haven't already used a piece of navigation technology before you've gotten to this point, well, this isn't going to help you. I think Commissioner Benjamin made that point. So I'm really reluctant to support this project. And by the way, just to confirm what John Doughty said earlier, I did have a chance to review the previous meeting through video, so I'm up to date. I've read the staff reports. the previous meeting through video, so I'm up to date and I've read the staff reports. So I just would love to hear if my fellow commissioners have the same opinion they did before or new opinions. But that's that's where I'm at now.
So, thank you. Commissioner Gossett? The floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Scott, for the report with both the condition of approval and the condition of denial. I did speak a lot at the last meeting, so I probably won't reiterate. I didn't think the IS slash MND justified the objective of a safety oriented traffic management rather than the day to day traffic management that was previously proposed by Caltrans. And so I do support the resolution for denial. And I agree with everything that Commissioner Benjamin and Hernandez had just said, so I don't really have to repeat myself. And I don't, as I said in the last meeting, I don't see, you know, this benefiting residents in Half Moon Bay, and it is a CDP that is issued in Half Moon Bay. So I I did state that in the last meeting. So I'll quit talking, and I wanted to say thank you so much, Scott, for an excellent report.
Sorry about that. My computer was about to die. So it's interesting. I have a hard time denying this. And it's, you know, personally, like when I look at the project, you know, you look at, like, does this fit the character of the area? Not at all. And is it necessary? I haven't really seen that proven to me. I I don't, I don't really see it as necessary. But I also, I don't really think that so I just don't think that it's really the planning commission's purview to say whether it's needed or not. Like, that's the city council decision. So, I mean, ideally, I would just, you know, I would pass this on to the city council because they're the ones that have to decide whether it's needed or not. But if we need to make a decision, if we have to either approve or deny, then I would definitely deny. I think this is this, you know, I don't see the need for it personally. And I just don't see how it, you know, the first thing you see when you come into Half Moon Bay from the south is this 12 foot wide, five foot tall sign. And I know you don't always see it, you know, you see it mostly in emergencies, but you do still see it. And, you know, I've seen those signs and I don't really want it there. I don't think it fits there. It hasn't been proven to me that it belongs there. So even though I don't really think it's our place to say whether or not it's needed. So Commissioner Ruddock, I think I think your hand goes up first.
Thank you, Chair. I I speak in in support of what you just said. I I think we ought to be careful about letting our decision wander into the area of, is this the only place where such a VMS would be useful? Is it the best place? I I if I if I restrict myself to evaluating the 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 application in the way that the draft resolutions do, then I as as you have have all been patient to hear me say more than once because of the the good work that's been done on citing and design and because of my motivation to try anything that might improve the impact of traffic here, I I think it I think it would get my approval. The Scott most recently showed again that visual simulation, and it 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 made me realize yet again that if you're criticizing the sign for its utilitarian and the proposed sign for utilitarian and mechanical aspect, well, that so called boom arm that it would be very close to it over overarching half or more of Highway 1 is, you know, it already exists and it is what it is. So I don't think that's a fair criticism for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin, I I hope I got the order right. But anyway, in any case, it's your up.
That was fine. I I love following Commissioner Ruddock, you know, because he brings some really good points, and I want to, I want to be responsive to them. Whether we agree or disagree, it's, you know, he's a, he's a great planning commissioner. I I actually, once again, I agree with a lot of the things that you said, and it reinforces my conclusion in a different direction. I consider there to be an unhealthy synergy between that boom and that sign. I don't see it as it's already done. So how much worse can this be? I think it's, I think they reinforce another message, which is this is a highway. This is not, you're not, this is not pre gateway for Half Moon Bay. But that's just, that's my take on it. I wanted to speak to your comments, Commissioner Warren, Chair Warren. I I think that the 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 findings for denial, which I thought were very well worded, were not about whether we like it or not, or whether we think it's a good idea, or whether it's necessary. It was about, does it conform with those policies that had to do with aesthetics and the right technology and infrastructure and the right place? And I think those findings would hold up, you know, that, you know, they they have a subjective quality, but they're rooted in the plan. So we're making findings about consistency with the local coastal program here. And with respect to the idea that, you know, it would be nice if we could punt this to the city council. If somebody appeals, it'll get punted, right? I was surprised that it was considered a major infrastructure project. I thought that the threshold for that was pretty big, but, you know, maybe it is, maybe it's cumulative. And, you know, maybe the maybe the the appeal will bring about a reversal of the whatever the majority decision from the planning commission is. I I don't know that. I do know that, you know, in an effort to make the town safe, in an effort to aid the traveler, in an effort to alert us to emergency situations, using more effective technologies that would provide information over a larger distance, a longer period of time. I think that there are better solutions that dominate this solution in each dimension. And that's why, not that I want to close out the conversation, but when we finish, I'm prepared to move for the resolution that's marked as attachment to for denial when we complete our discussion. But I'll defer to you until when to do that. Thank you.
We still have Vice Chair Hernandez. I also just, just to be clear, just to clarify, you know, when I look at you know, the Coastal Act, that's that's cited right at the top, the first one, it becomes clear to me that if the if the project is really necessary, then it does not violate the Coastal Act. But if it's not necessary, then it does. And so really, that's the the core question is, is it needed? And my personal answer is no, it's not. But, you know, I also don't really so I would I prefer to find based on, you know, what we're supposed to be doing, which is, does it conform to LCP and Coastal Act? And so it's just, it just seems like we're in a funny spot, that's all. So Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yeah, I mean, I just agree with, you know, I always find myself watching Jimmy play 3D chess while I'm trying to play checkers when it comes to planning. But I think the findings to deny the project are consistent with the LCP. And so I think that that's, you know, this is an interesting technology. It's a it's a it's not a novel use, but it's not necessary here. And there are lots of technologies that could be used here. And the bigger point I was trying to make is there are more effective ways to use a technology to reach out to people that Caltrans really should look at. And this particular type of technology, hey, at 92, coming into Half Moon Bay, maybe in other places, there's a more appropriate place to use it, but it's hard for me to agree that this is necessary, to think of the point you were making, Chair Warren. So I would like to second the motion to deny this project.
And do any other commissioners have further comment? We do have a motion and a second. Seeing none, I will say, can we do a roll call?
Who seconded?
Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yes, Commissioner Gossett?
To be clear, for the denial, yes.
So, okay.
Yes means denial.
Okay. Commissioner Ruddock?
I vote no.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, please.
Okay. The motion is, or the motion to deny is approved. Four zero.
Okay, four one.
I'm sorry, four one. Yes, I have four one.
Thank you. Okay. So where are we? Directors report? Is that what we're up to? Dottie, you are director today.
Thank you. Thank you. And I pass along the well wishes and from from Jill. I did speak to her briefly today, but thankfully, she's gonna be able to take a little more, a little bit of vacation after taking care of some family needs and issues there in Washington State. So we wish her well and the family well. I'm pleased to report that your first meeting in September will be canceled. Staff is working diligently and vigilantly on many items and many things, but Jill wanted me to convey that that you're off the hook for the first meeting in September, and we will reconvene the commission at the second meeting in September. And that is all I can offer tonight to you from the directors chair.
We do have to, are we having an administrative hearing tomorrow, action meeting tomorrow? Just to spin off the cancellation of our planning mission meeting, tomorrow, we do have a administrative hearing action at 4:30 and no AAC this month. As John just said, staff is diligently working on some projects that just aren't ready for the the preview of or the viewing of AAC to to review those yet. So that's all we have.
Thank you. Commissioner reports, we have Commissioner Benjamin.
Actually, it was a, it was a question for staff and, oh, yeah, I'm on, I'm on, okay. I noticed that there was a biologic study for some work in the, to replace a culvert in the Pullman Water Course as it goes under, you know, through state parkland. And I think it has gone, it's gone for public comment on July 25. I think it was a 45 day period. I'm not sure. But I wanted to call it out in case any members of the public are interested, you know, that's sort of an important resource. It's the, it's the difference between having an access to the State Beach parking area near Gaines Beach or not having one. And it has the potential to impact the coastal trail. And so you may want to have a look at that, or if you're members of the public and want to weigh in, I think there's still some time, if I read it correctly. I I don't think it closed in Ju- in July. I think
Through the chair, I think, Scott, are you familiar with that?
Yes, John Doughty.
Yes, sir. I'm I'm actually the project planner for that. And you are correct, we do have a little bit more time on the the comment period. That is a project that will be presented to the planning commission at a date yet to be determined. And State Parks is the the owner and applicant on it. So there's, that's something that they're diligently working on and with me as well, so.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to be, I thought it was maybe worth just calling out, so forgive me if I'm out of out of turn, but I had no other, no other questions and no commission report. Except maybe a reminder that I will be out of the office and out of state in September. I will be in Colorado, in fact. So it's it's not obvious yet exactly what my dates are, but if I'm not here, it's not because I don't care. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Commissioner reports, we have Vice Chair Hernandez.
Just want to say, as we come out of COVID, we all need to find ways to relieve stress and reset as human beings. And I also have a new puppy that needs to be socialized. So if any of you need to pet me, I'm welcome to volunteer my puppy to be pet. And you guys are, you guys are welcome to participate in that process of socializing my puppy.
All right, name? Name?
What's your name? What's your name?
I heard a little whining. I was wondering if there was a puppy in there or something.
Can you say your name?
Yes, it's it's Ellie.
All right.
It could be a puppet, you know.
It could, actually.
Oh, now I see. It's okay. Congratulations.
Seeing no other comments, can we have a motion?
To make a motion to end tonight's meeting.
That is Vice Chair Hernandez. We have a second from Commissioner Benjamin.
Okay, Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruddock?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair Warren?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you for being gentle with me. I agree. Very good meeting.
Did a great job. Thank you.
It was all, it was all Scott and and Jill.